I didn't even have to hit the gavel. Thank you. Good evening. Welcome to the Township of Abington's Board of Commissioners meeting for February, February the 12th, 2015. And may I have a roll call, please?
Mr. President.
Here.
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 Here. Here. Commissioner Jones is en route, held up in traffic. Could everyone please stand for the place of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, before we start our formal agenda, we have some presentations to make. So the first one, we'll call on our Township Manager, Michael LaFever, for a special presentation for Susan Matisza.
President Lueker, if I can ask you to come forward. And Susan, if you would step up as well. For the benefit of the people in the audience that aren't familiar with Susan Matisza, she recently retired after forty-three years of service to the township. The last fourteen years as our Finance Director. As Township Manager, I'm not permitted to have favorites among our employees. However, if it were acceptable, there should be no doubt who would be at the top of that list. Susan embodies all the qualities anyone could ever hope for in a coworker: dedicated, hardworking, extremely knowledgeable, and a pleasure to be around. She's truly done an outstanding job for the township over the last forty-three years. Because she's so good at her job, she's well-regarded not among all Township staff, but virtually anyone that interacted with her on a daily basis. On a personal level, I need to express my appreciation for the numerous times she's come to me to voice her opinion on an issue when she felt I was moving in the wrong direction. Keep in mind, I didn't ask for her opinion. But nevertheless, that did deter, and her input was always very valuable and appreciated. As good as an employee Susan has been, she's even a better person. I sincerely believe all of us are better off, our lives more complete, simply for having the opportunity to spend some time with her. So on behalf of all the employees, Susan, thank you for everything and best wishes.
I've been here a lot of years, and I think that's the longest ovation I've seen anyone get. Oh, Michael, thank you very much for those comments. I jotted mine down only because I think when I started, I had three pages. And Maria, or Weisstra, our Assistant, or Township Manager's Assistant, informed me that shorter sometimes is better. So I just jotted down that although you may no longer be here, the policies and practices and disciplines that you and your fine staff, all of whom are here tonight, were instrumental in implementing, will ensure financial stability of the township for years to come. Your department has been nationally recognized for your comprehensive annual financial reporting by the Government Finance Officers Association. For this, Susan, we all thank you. When your mentor Alan LaRash passed on, you assumed his responsibilities admirably, and for years, you've guided all the Commissioners quite well through good times and bad times. So for that, we have a plaque that reads... "The Abington Township Board of Commissioners wishes to commend your exemplary service career and recognize forty-three years of outstanding dedication to Abington Township and our great Abington community. For all that you have achieved, thank you. We wish you good luck, good health, and a pleasant, well-deserved retirement." Thank you, Susan.
Okay, so now, those of you that really know me know this is the most terrifying part of the evening for me. But I do want to thank the Board of Commissioners and the Township Manager. You have always been very supportive, not only of me, but of my whole department, and I really appreciate that. It's been a pleasure to work with all of the Department Heads. You guys have really taught me so much about every single aspect of Abington Township. You do a wonderful job. Thank you for that. And I would like to say that I've been so fortunate to work with a great team of people in my own office. It allows me to leave here knowing that I leave the Finance Department in really competent hands. Kevin, Jeanette, Linda, Monica, and Kathy, they're hard-working, smart, dedicated people, and I have no qualms whatsoever. You're in good hands. So finally, I'd just like to thank my family because they've always been supportive of me and very loving. So I start a new phase of my life, and I'm really excited about that. But I am really going to miss being a part of this wonderful, wonderful organization. So thank you so much.
Again, thank you, Susan, for all that you've done. Can Susan's family please stand up so we can see who you are? Susan, did you want to acknowledge each one of them, please? Thank you.
I forgot about them. Okay. This is my husband, Rich, my first grandchild, Samantha, my daughter Kate, my daughter Kelly, her husband Sean, and my sister Betsy, who came from Washington, D.C. to be with me. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you all.
And Susan, it's the appropriate time to sneak out if you don't want to stay for the whole meeting, so feel free.
Thank you. At this time, Commissioner Stephen Kalinowski has a presentation for the Hunter Soccer Club.
Okay, this is an important presentation, so I'm going to ask Commissioner Jimmy DePlacito to come down with me. All right. I'll ask Coach Greg Garrison, Dave Hill, and Vicki West, the three coaches. This is for the Hunter Mustangs, under-12 girls soccer team. They won the indoor state championship. So, real quick, 2015 Indoor State Championship Cup was held on January 25th in Pemara, PA. The Mustangs won four and oh, went four and oh with ten goals and one against. The victories over Quakertown, Olmsted, Central Susquehanna. The Mustangs defeated Cheltenham Cheetahs three to nothing in the final to capture this championship. This is a first indoor state championship for the Hunter Soccer Club in fifty-three years. Everybody knows the Hunter Soccer Club's in Ward Six, greatest place to be in Abington Township. They've got a great fieldhouse there, and they keep their park beautiful at Pembroke. So the girls' names, real quick. Abigail Bastida, is that it? Okay. Mara Delano, Lily Funk, Madeline Hill, Madeline Hinkle, Allison Holding, Caroline Hughes, Margaret Junkin, Lasha Carraba, Camille Moni, is that right? Okay. Margaret Nelson, Lauren Quigley, Olivia Verola, and Riley West, is that right? I practiced these names all day, so I better got them right. So I'll let Commissioner DePlacito read the plaque real quick, and give it to you.
Okay. This certificate of commendation is presenting to the Hunter Mustangs, U-12 girls soccer team, indoor state cup champions 2015. A recognition of their 2015 Indoor State Cup of Outstanding Accomplishment, during which they achieved a four-and-o record with ten goals, four, and one against. With victories over Quakertown, Olmsted, and Central Susquehanna, the Mustangs defeated the Cheltenham Cheetahs three to nothing in the final to capture the championship win. The Board of Commissioners of Abington Township congratulate your indoor state championship win. Congratulations.
So thanks very much. We greatly appreciate this opportunity, Steve and Jimmy, for all your efforts and the opportunity to make this connection with Mark Penacal, who I think connected with you, Steve. And so we greatly appreciate that. We certainly appreciate all the consideration and all the support that the Commissioners and the entire Township has shown, not only the girls, but the club and everything that Hunter Soccer's been involved with, as well as all of youth sports. It's been a pleasure to be a part of the Township in terms of our success and our efforts. And I'd especially like to thank the parents, my fellow coaches, my manager, Maria. Where's Maria? Somewhere back there? Maria? And then, of course, all of the girls and their fine commitment and their wonderful love and enjoyment of this game. It's a pleasure working with them and coaching them, and it's great to see their success. So thanks very much again. Greatly appreciate it.
Do you mind if we step out for one moment to get a picture? Would that be okay? No, we stepped out, Commissioner, to just get one quick picture. The meeting can continue. Thank you.
Go ahead. Thank you.
Great work, ladies.
No, we can continue.
Okay, we can continue. Okay. I can do some housekeeping measures right now. First, I'd like to, we do have one other presentation to make, and I can call on Commissioner Spiegelman. Is he here?
I'm right here.
Oh.
I am not out in the hall. And before I get up, it's actually, it's my pleasure to call up to the podium Mr. Edward Mebus and Mrs. Rosemary Mebus. She deserves to be up there, too.
Mrs. Mebus, of course.
Mr. President, colleagues on the board, Township staff, and our neighbors in the audience, zoning hearing board is a tough job. It lacks the glamour and romance of being a Commissioner, and also our huge pay scale. You have to master some incredibly dry and complicated but really important material. And when you render a decision, half the people in the room disagree with you and are angry at you, and the half that agrees with you probably doesn't even take the time to say thank you. But we're here to honor someone who has dedicated a massive amount of time and tireless service to the people and community of this township as a member of the zoning hearing board. Ed Mebus joined the zoning hearing board as an alternate member in 1997, served diligently in that capacity, became a full member in 2002, and has served ever since. In a job that is, as I said, difficult, complicated, and often highly underappreciated, but where things can get incredibly heated, Ed has always brought a sense of calm professionalism, a relaxed and approachable and accessible demeanor, and integrity to everything he's done. In addition to his dedicated service on the zoning hearing board, Ed was an incredibly active member of the Zoning Ordinance Rewrite Committee. I know we always like to make my friend Commissioner Klein the handsome face of the zoning rewrite committee, but...
He can have it.
As this ordinance moves forward, know that Ed's incredibly hard work and insight and signature pervade that document. And the way our township is now, the way our township looks now, and the way it will look in the future, will always, always bear the proud influence of Ed Mebus. And I know that he could not have done this without the support of Rosemary, who is honestly one of the sweetest people in the central ward. And Ed and Rosemary are wonderful Ward 11 neighbors. So now I'd like to read the certificate. "With profound appreciation for almost two decades of dedicated service to the people and community of Abington Township as a member of the zoning hearing board, alternate member from 1997 to 2002, full-time member from 2002 to 2015," I know you're going to correct me and say 2014, but I want to give you credit for this year as well, "and an active member of the Zoning Ordinance Rewrite Committee and the Comprehensive Plan Update Committee for imparting his knowledge and guidance during some of the most memorable and transformative development applications in Abington Township in a generation, and for serving with dignity, professionalism, perspective, and wisdom. The Board of Commissioners of Abington Township gratefully presents this certificate of appreciation to Edward A. Mebus." Sir, thank you.
Ah, boy, where did the time go. This was not a position I sought. I was asked by my then-Commissioner to consider joining. I tried it out, and I guess I must have liked it. Still here. The Board and my tenure, I guess we've gone through maybe a dozen different members over time. There's been one constant member, and that's Barbara Wirthheimer, who's the soul of the Board. She has my time beat all the heck already, and it's a record that will never be equal. Taught me a lot. She has been the rock of the Board. The Board has been, as Commissioner Spiegelman's saying, it is a quasi-legal job. We take it very seriously. Took it very seriously, in my case. I really think the Board has always tried to keep the best interests of the township and the applicants in mind, and to do it, especially within the context of the law, very important. I've gained a great appreciation for the law over the years. And without that, we would have nothing. I have learned that this is a very well-run township. I thank you, Commissioners. It's -- I've lived in other Townships, and this certainly has been a cut above consistently over the years. I do want to thank, as I say, the Commissioners, Mr. Matteo, Mr. Penacal, Mr. Eckle. We have another Board Member here, Linda Cates, tonight. Thank you for coming. It has been a pleasure working with all of you. I have learned a lot, and I've grown a lot in this position. Now I'm starting to shrink, but that's another story. Commissioner Spiegelman mentioned that half the people would be pleased and half would not be. I guess my comment on that was, really, there were only two people we've came across who thought that Abington Township was color on earth. The other sixty-eight thousand three hundred twenty-five or so residents think it's a pretty good, pretty good place to be. One ending note, when I got my first appointment, the Commissioners voted, and apparently it was a majority vote, sometime after that, one of the Commissioners, excuse me, one of the Commissioners came up to me, and he said, "I apologize. For real, I voted against you because I thought you were someone else." And that Commissioner was Mr. Is, Mr. Wayne Lueker. I've never forgotten that. It was a very, very classy thing to do, and it greatly impressed me as to the quality of the people who are in the management of this township. So thank you, Wayne. I've never forgotten that. Thank you all.
To Mebus, I think it was just taken for granted, but would you like to acknowledge your wife?
This is my wife.
Are you sure?
I've been married for thirty-seven years, thirty-seven years. I've been in the township since 1980, thirty-four, and over thirty-five years. It's been a very good experience.
Thank you both. All right, that concludes our presentation. For some housekeeping announcements, I first like to announce that an executive session was held today, Thursday, February 12th, at 7:00 P.M. to discuss a personnel matter. Thank you. And now, next on our agenda is the appointment to the volunteer advisory commissions. Now, this is for reappointments only, so unless any Commissioners object, I can do this as one motion to accept all the reappointments that are listed in front of you, unless anyone objects.
You're good.
Okay, hearing none. I'll entertain a motion then to accept all the reappointments listed in front of you to the volunteer board and commissions for reappointments, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. At this time, okay, the new appointments to vacancies on the voluntary boards will be done at our March Commissioners Meeting. Thank you. At this time, I'll entertain a motion from Vice President Stephen Klein for the minutes.
Thank you, President Lueker. I'd like to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for the Board of Commissioners meeting of January 8th, 2015, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to Commissioner Thomas Bowman, Director of Public Works.
Thank you, Mr. President. Before moving to the public works agenda, I'd just like to wish a happy birthday to Ed Micheloe, who's going to turn sixty-seven years old tomorrow. And I'm sure you'll appreciate this birthday in special fashion. Okay. Moving on to our scheduled agenda, PW1, this is a bid award for ready-mixed concrete. This is a motion to accept the lowest responsible bidder and enter into a contract with JDM Materials for the purchase of ready-mixed concrete as per bid specifications, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments from Commissioners, staff? Any from residents? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
PW2, this is a bid award for superpaved asphalt paving material. And this is a motion to accept the lowest responsible bidder and enter into a contract with Eureka Stone Quarry for Part 1 of the bid in the amount of $479,879.825, and Glasgow Inc. for Part 2 in the amount of $49,975 for the purchase of superpaved materials as per bid specifications, and I so move.
Second.
Motion has been seconded. Any comments from Commissioners or staff? Any from residents? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
PW3 is Resolution Number 15-009, Edgehill Road, Tyson Avenue, Flood Control, Street Reconstruction Project. And this is a motion to approve Resolution Number 15-009 for the Edgehill Road, Tyson Avenue, Flood Control, Street Reconstruction Project Reimbursement Agreement Number 064132-C, Supplement C. And I so move.
Second.
Motion has been seconded. Any comments from Commissioners and/or staff? Any from residents? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
PW4, this is the Edgehill Road, Tyson Avenue, Flood Control, Street Reconstruction Project, Resolution 15-011, Right-of-Way Agreements. This is a motion to approve Rudolph Clark LLC price proposal in the amount of $769,660 for Supplement C of the Edgehill Road, Tyson Avenue, Street Reconstruction Project Right-of-Way Acquisitions. Motion to approve Resolution Number 15011 to add Rudolph Clark LLC for legal appraisal and title services relating to the Edgehill Road, Tyson Avenue, Flood Control, Street Reconstruction Project Reimbursement Agreement Number 064132-C, Supplement C for right-of-way acquisitions. And before this gets moved to the floor, we will go to Manager LaFever for some comment.
I'll second it. Yes, I'm sorry.
Okay, the motion has been seconded. Mr. LaFever.
Thank you, Commissioner Bowman. As the Board recalls, this was discussed at length at the Public Works Committee meeting last week. It was moved to the full Board without a recommendation from the Committee. However, it was the consensus of the Committee that the proposal from Rudolph Clark be forwarded to Arrow to provide them the opportunity to revise their proposal and submit a final and best proposal to the Township. That was done. Arrow has resubmitted another proposal to the Township, a copy of which has been filed to each member of the Board. The revised proposal came in at the amount of $777,108, which on the services, approximately $7,700, more than that from Rudolph Clark. But the revised Arrow proposal does not include services for appraisal services. In the Rudolph Clark proposal, that cost was approximately $239,000. So on the service, in the best-case scenario, the Arrow proposal is almost a quarter million dollars more expensive than that of Rudolph Clark. In addition, the Arrow proposal also has a disclaimer that they're offering that proposal with the assumption that only 25% of the residents will actually avail themselves of the financial temporary easement on their property, temporary construction easement. And if more than that require appraisal services, the costs will go up accordingly. So based on the revised numbers, it was a recommendation to Township Engineer, whom which I concur, that the award be given to Rudolph Clark at the amount specified.
Thank you, Mr. LaFever. The motion has been seconded. Any comments from Commissioners? Commissioner Klein.
So I had a question. On the appraisal services, the $239,000 is based on if there were, if some of these temporary construction easements, people just don't give them up without fee. Is that correct? Is that what the appraisal services are needed for?
The appraisal from Rudolph Clark was not to exceed amount. So that's what the assumption said. 100% of the people will require appraisal services and the maximum cost from that firm. If a certain percentage of the same percentage as assumed in the Arrow proposal, only 25% avail them of that, the cost would come down considerably.
Rudolph Clark's costs would...
That's correct.
Thank you.
But Commissioner, the appraisal services, and this is one of the ways that our proposal differs from Arrow. Our, what we are proposing to do is to get appraisals of all of the properties at the, as fast as we can, because we believe this will prevent the project from bogging down at any one time. Because what our fear was from reviewing the Arrow proposal is that if we don't get appraisals on all of the properties, and then property owners want appraisals on the properties, it's going to slow the whole project down. So Coil Lynch, who will be the appraiser on, with this proposal, will do appraisals on all of the appraisals, the temporary construction easements, and the fee simple takings, and then also the drainage easements. So we will have all of those, so there should be no delay in case property owner one says, "I want an appraisal because I want to dispute this," and property owner two through nine doesn't, but we're going to have them in hand. but we're going to have them in hand. We think that it is a smarter way to go because it's going to be less delay in the project.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Commissioner Gillespie.
Do you want to...
Go ahead, Karen.
I just, thank you very much. I just wanted to say, it is a huge project for anyone that hasn't really gone to one of the meetings. We are talking huge, many homes, and all it takes is one or two, so I think it's a good idea that everyone does get that appraisal. That's good.
Commissioner Zepone, thank you.
Are we going to establish some type of deadline on this? You know, so I know this thing is moving and, you know, progress reports, because I've been working on this for 10 years, keeping my residents informed and updated as what's going on, so I need this thing to keep moving.
In anticipation that the board is going to make a decision this evening, meetings have been scheduled with township staff for next week to begin to put together essentially what I would call the battle plan. That meeting will include, Coil Lynch will be in the loop on those meetings. If this proposal is approved this evening, Coil Lynch will begin the process of the appraisals. One of the things that we will do in working with the township administration will be to updating all of the board members and all of the residents, and we've contemplated even discussing putting something on the website, so there is a link, so people know when this project is happening. So, we're not just going to rely on mail or other ways of communicating with the residents so they all know, but the commissioners will be kept updated throughout.
And any of those updates, if you can get them to me so I can put them on my website for my residents, I'd appreciate that. Thanks, Michael.
Commissioner Spiegelman.
Thank you, Mr. President. Without rehashing everything that was discussed at Public Works, because we'd be here till the first birds of spring, I just want to say that as far as the concerns that I held and expressed, they are completely satisfied now.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Myers.
Thank you. I also will not rehash what we talked about at the committee meeting. I certainly have no problem with the price. I am, however, very concerned at the fact that it's our township solicitor, and this is obviously not personal, because I would feel this way about whoever the solicitor was, doing this work, and so my question is, will we have, who would be the legal entity that will be overseeing this job? Because at a town meeting that we had with Commissioner Lueker, we were asked, and the chief answered the question very well, "Who's policing the police?" So, my question is, who's policing the police here?
I think it's a very good question, and I think everyone has to keep in mind that this project is being funded by the state of Pennsylvania. It is a PennDOT project. Its estimated cost is approximately $17 million. PennDOT is paying 100% of the cost and 80% of the professional services related to the cost, so PennDOT will have a direct involvement in it, and will be overseeing the proper protocols followed throughout the course of the project.
But also, Commissioner Myers, it is a PennDOT project, but the township is the local project sponsor. Our responsibility, as Rudolph Clark's responsibility, is to the township. PennDOT is not our client. PennDOT is merely a, there's a reimbursement agreement which was approved earlier this evening, and PennDOT is funding the project and they're providing a lot of the engineering, but our client is Abington Township. So, we answer to the 15 of you and the township administration. We don't take any direction from PennDOT. If a situation should arise where there is a conflict between the township and PennDOT, not that I anticipate that there would be one, other than normal things that go on in a project of this magnitude, then obviously, we are only answering and only representing the township. We're not representing PennDOT. PennDOT has all of their own lawyers involved in this project, mostly out of District 6 in King of Prussia, but also out of Harrisburg.
Well, I would just like to say that our clients are Abington Township as well, and I don't, I don't think, I'm not comfortable with this. I don't think it's a good way to go. It's a good process. I'll leave it at that.
Commissioner Klein.
Yeah, can I have a follow-up, because I actually, you know, I voiced some of the same concerns that Commissioner Myers talked about. If there is an issue, is there any perception of any kind of issue that could come up where the board would need to hire conflict counsel?
No, because we don't represent PennDOT. PennDOT has their own Office of General Counsel. Again, most of this will be done out of the District 6 office. Some of it may be done out of Harrisburg, but most of this will be done out of District 6. We will not be giving PennDOT any legal advice, nor will we be taking any direction from PennDOT from a legal perspective, other than when they tell us we need to follow certain guidelines and things along those lines, but those are things that are not adverse to the township. If any conflict should arise, it would be between the negotiations, the dispute, whatever you want to call it, would be between my office on behalf of the township and the PennDOT Office of General Counsel.
So, let me just throw out, I mean, I don't even know if this is a possibility. What happens if there was a dispute between a homeowner that the township is looking for, or PennDOT is looking for an easement from, and they have an issue with Rudolph Clark and/or the appraiser, or so on and so forth?
As the local project sponsor, the local project sponsor is allowed to procure services for right-of-way acquisition as it sees fit, as long as those individuals qualify. The appraiser who the board is considering hiring this evening, Coil Lynch, is a certified PennDOT appraiser, so by being a certified PennDOT appraiser, PennDOT will accept their appraisals. If there is a dispute regarding how the matter is being handled, for instance, if we need to, and hopefully it will not come to this, but if we needed to condemn property, because a property owner won't sign an easement agreement, when these projects are done this way, PennDOT leaves it up to the local project sponsor for the acquisition of the right-of-way to handle those matters. It would not be a matter, PennDOT does not want to come in and start condemning property in the name of PennDOT. That's why they set up a situation like this with the local project sponsor.
So, if somebody were to, if you were to go ahead, and let's say we go down the road of the condemnation, and condemn a property because they can't get the easement, and they, somehow, they're going to fight, they fight the condemnation, I guess my, the back end of that question is, are we now, you already have a fee for this work, outside of our contract, you know, outside of our normal solicitorship contract with Rudolph Clark, you would now get paid extra money for defending an eminent domain. Is that still the case?
That is the case, and that is, that is as listed as in our proposal, and it's not really different from the Arrow proposal, other than you know who's going to be doing the work, and that is us, and you know what the fee is, because we've quoted it in our proposal. The Arrow proposal does not, that original $800,000, the revised number, does not provide for legal services for any litigation or any declarations of taking, or any boards of view, anything that may happen if someone does not voluntarily consent to the easement. So, that would have been an additional cost that Arrow would have been coming back to the township on. We also think, one of the reasons, again, that we decided to submit a proposal was, as Commissioner Zepone has said, how long this project has gone on. With us being on the ground floor and involved in it from day, from the minute we start contacting all the residents, we're going to be able to determine who the residents are, or who the property owners are, who we think may be not likely to sign. Therefore, we'll be in a better position to say, "They want to put shovel and dirt in six months." We know that these nine property owners haven't signed. Condemnation period will take us about 120 days to get title to the property, so we'll know exactly what we need to do. We were concerned at the Arrow proposal, not having that ability to do that, that then they would, at some point, be turning it over to a law firm, whether it was us or whether it was another law firm, and then that law firm would need to get up to speed on what had transpired over the last six months, nine months, year, whatever the time period is. Not only would it delay the project, but it would also, we think, be much more costly as somebody was trying to, as somebody was trying to get up to speed on this.
And then my last question, Manager LaFever, I assume you're comfortable making sure, or as to use Commissioner Myers' word, policing the contract issues as far as that line that could potentially, I'm not saying it will, but could potentially blur between their contract for this specific project and their contract with the township?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Markman.
So, the one comment I have, and I know that certain issues were brought up at the committee meeting, but this allows us to have an element of control over the process that we wouldn't have if we were using someone we didn't know. So, the nice part is, it's our lawyer. We can direct our lawyer what to do. We can make this project happen quicker. If we had to deal with Arrow, who's some company in the middle of the state that has no reason to listen to us, except for potentially a fiduciary obligation, we'd have trouble compelling them to do the work quicker, where this is our solicitor and we have an ability to control our solicitor. So, I understand there was a lot of issues that came out, but the end result is, there's no legal conflict that I can tell, and I think in, in the contrary to that, it actually gives us more control over a very important project that has to get done for the people of Abington. So, I think the end result here is a very positive one, although there were issues brought up, the result is a good one. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Markman. Any other comments from commissioners? Any comments from staff, any from residents? Name and address for the record, please.
I think this is positively unbelievable. We just have people saying, "I see no conflict of interest," and therefore, there is none. Kind of like Mr. Sanchez the other day said, he knew both the parties very well intimately, but in his mind, he had no conflict, so he continued to vote. That's what a conflict is. You're describing what a conflict is. The conflicts here are rife. First of all, the conflict of asking this solicitor whether these things are in conflict. They're sitting here, asking him for his advice as to whether his contract is in conflict, okay? And I agree with Commissioner Myers, that this is not appropriate. It happened. It happened. This is, this is absolutely not appropriate. I did alert the Attorney General's Office. I think it is so inappropriate that this needs to be looked at. Also, the fact that we had a $500,000 was the comparison to the other $800,000 contract. We were going to save $300,000. When that came in, that somebody didn't recognize that we had a contract, and they were throwing in some extra things, so it was really somewhere between $300,000 and $400,000 that we were saving. Somebody didn't recognize that we had a PennDOT contract that was charging nearly double what an acceptable, you're considering Rudolph Clark acceptable, so what an acceptable contractor would charge, and that was nearly double, and somebody didn't say, "We've got a problem here." If we have something, Arrow would have come in and just gotten approved like that, if it hadn't have been for this particular conflict of interest that came up and sparked the discussion. So, we have also a situation where every part of what allows you not to go out to bid was created by this township. The contract came in, according to Rudolph Clark, they had it by December, so maybe it came in November, and I think she said December was the first that they could look at it, okay? In order to meet the residents' needs, March 1st, when that contract came in, Mr. Powers would have had to been ready to prepare a bid, if it was necessary. And we do have, anything over $25,000 is supposed to go to bid, and Mr. Jones read some of the reasons that they don't go to bid, okay? I don't think this qualifies for any of them.
Commissioner Jones.
If you interrupt me again to tell me the difference between commissioner, et cetera, then I'll feel free to interrupt you whenever I see a word that you mistakenly said.
Mrs. Lehman, I caution Vice President Klein.
Yeah, I've asked in the past if the chair would please control Mr. Klein from interrupting, okay? This is my time, and, yeah, and I, and I think he needs to control himself a little bit, okay? So, what we have here is a situation that, and I want to read this. The exceptions include, okay, these are the things that allow you to not go to bid, okay? Requested services cannot be adequately specified without a sacrificed quality. Both of them were qualified.
Mrs. Lehman, I think we're familiar with the parameters.
What was the one that you hung your hat on? That's what I want to know. I want to know what was...
It's a professional service, and it does not need to be bid.
I'm sorry?
It's a professional service, and it does not need to be bid.
Any professional service under 20, or over $25,000 has only these exemptions. Which one of these exemptions, because I don't think any of them apply. Only these exemptions are excluded, and I would like to have a minute to read them, because the public needs to know this.
We're familiar with that, but this is not a discussion. We went over all these at the committee...
Does the public have a right to know which exemption you are claiming, because none of them fit? So, which one are you claiming?
I think counsel answered that question, then.
Where is that? I certainly didn't hear an answer, "Which one?" He said it doesn't need to be bid.
Well, you've exhausted your time, Mrs. Lehman.
Thank you.
Thanks to Commissioner Klein. I'm sure you won't mind giving me a little extra. I think Mr. Tinsman had about 10 minutes. We had some people with a half an hour. This is important.
Okay, and I'll do fairness, I'll give you another minute. Go ahead.
Thank you.
Wrap it up, please.
Yeah, thank you. You know, it's almost unbelievable here. In this particular case, we have Rudolph Clark saying that the contract is bad, okay? We'd have to believe that they had no interest in it themselves. They turned around and awarded it to themselves, okay? Now, he just said that the thing came in, and he decided that theirs was better because they were doing things a certain way, they were going to get all these appraisals at once. That should have been in the bid specs for Arrow to know, and then Arrow would have gotten all of those at once. Instead, it wasn't put in the specs. Mr. Clark decided, "We can use this as the reason why ours is better." Everything is created here by this particular board to not bid, and then to say that theirs is better. First of all, Arrow should sue you guys. They won't, because then they wouldn't get any more township business, okay?
Okay, Mrs. Lehman, I think we covered this very well, Monday, Wednesday, and I think we've had a motion and seconded, and an explanation from the manager, as well as the solicitor, so unless you have anything further to add that wasn't already said, we're going to vote on this at this time.
Well, could I have an answer before you vote as to exactly what is the wording that allows you not to bid this out, according to...
Professional services do not need to be bid. It is black-letter law in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Choosing your engineer, choosing your website creator, well, that's a bad one, because they don't consider that unique, choosing your lawyer, choosing an engineer, choosing an auditor, does not need to be bid.
That's from Pennsylvania purchasing. The resolution in Abington Township is quite different.
I tell you the law, you don't like the answer.
I'm asking you about the resolution in Abington Township, or anything...
Mrs. Lehman?
He's misunderstood my question, that's all.
No, I'm sorry.
The resolution was implied with, the board got two proposals, one from our firm and one from Arrow. They're choosing one of the proposals.
It was not put out to bid, or those specs would have been in it.
It's not a bid, it's a request for proposal. You're using the word incorrectly.
Mrs. Lehman, to that end, I'll consider the conversation closed.
Thank you.
The motion has been moved and seconded.
I just have to clarify one thing, because the Speaker, in typical fashion, maligned me at the start of her comments with saying that I had some inappropriate business relationship with somebody bidding on this contract. That's not true. If she's talking about my comments, in relation to this, I merely vouch for the professional credentials of the Coil Lynch Company, who I have no pecuniary interest, I've just worked with them professionally, both with them on projects, not for their company, and then against them in different veins in my professional career, so I just wanted to clarify that for the record.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public?
Mr. Bell. You've got to come to the stand, Mr. Bell.
Name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, people. My name is Eugene, Fennigan, Little Norrie Avenue. I would just like to make sure that the project that you're talking about, the Edgehill Road and the Tyson Avenue floodplain, does not turn into a debatical, that the Abington Township Board of Commissioners approved... That the Abington Township Board of Commissioners approved probably 20 years ago at the corner of Roy and Chester, we had a small hump. Cars got tied up in bad weather, when we had a little bit of snow or ice. We've had it this year. The township came in and dropped the street. Fine, but the hump is still there, and now it's worse than it was to start with. And they had all the professionals, that man sitting, well, I don't know whether he was over there or not. I'll be honest with you. I don't really give a damn. Pardon my French. However, get some professional people who know what the heck they're doing to, when you have a major project, and you've got a major project going. That's all I'm saying.
There are a lot of people pushing this project, Mr. Finnegan.
I don't really give a baton you.
Okay.
I gave Chief Kelly a piece of paper that was in the article, it was in the newspaper. If you have to raise my taxes, and I said the same thing to Jay Blumenthal, go ahead and do it. But, all I'm saying is, darn it, do it right. Yeah, I'm getting upset. I'm 82 years old. I've been around this township a long, long time. I grew up in Glen Side, 1940. The Mevises have got an award today. Mevis family's been in Glen Side on Oakdale Avenue for many, many years. Unfortunately, I didn't know them. When they became into prominent, I was in Korea. But, all I'm saying is, you guys have a hell of a job, and I admit this. And I applaud you for the job that you do do. But, you're playing with people's lives. Get it right. If you need help, ask.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the public? Name and address, please.
Raymond Bell, Parkview Avenue. I am very aware of observing all of the televised hearings, but I want to, just for my comfort, and it has something to do with what Commissioner Spielman had said. What's to prevent future contracts coming, and they're not going out to bid? Now, I hear what the solicitor says, that professional services do not have to be bid by Pennsylvania law. I'm not sure of that. I'm not a lawyer. But, my understanding is that if the professional services was over $25,000, then there would be a need. I get a sense that, you know, I know you want to do the right thing for the people, and this has been going on a long time. But, I tell you, I'm not comfortable with what the solicitor has said, both Mr. Clark and his associate, that you can take a look at contracts and say, "What's wrong?" And here's mine. I just don't, I don't get that. But, be that as it may, you obviously have to vote. When Mr. Klein, Mr. Gillespie raised this issue at a prior meeting about not being comfortable, I haven't been made comfortable tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Okay, hearing none, the motion has been seconded. Are we ready to vote? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you. Commissioner Bowman, continue.
Returning to PW5. This is a 2014 capital improvement program for 1004 Urban Road. This is a motion to authorize the appropriate township officials to complete an appraisal for 1004 Urban Road for a potential buyout, to be funded from 2014 bond issue, and I so move.
Second.
Motion has been seconded. Any comments from commissioners or staff? Any from residents? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
PW6. This is some pump connections. This is a motion to approve $30,000 for some pump connections to be added to account number 07-07-566-7506, to be funded from contingency fund, and I so move.
Second.
Motion has been seconded. Any comments from commissioners, staff? Any from residents? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
And finally, PW7?
Excuse me.
Yes, I'm sorry. I was so astounded that Commissioner Myers voted no. I was writing it down to give her kudos in my newsletter.
Question, Ms. Lehman?
But, I missed the Urban Road thing, and I wanted to say something. So, I understand you've already voted, but I hope you would entertain my comments that I intended to make.
Which one is this, ma'am?
This was Urban Road, the one right before this. So, it just happened too quick, and I was still writing down the things from before. So, I appreciate if you'd just, this is on PW5, Urban Road, and you approved the buyout on Urban Road. And I just wanted to mention that I had been in touch with other Urban Road constituents who also are in exactly the same shape, and they very much also would appreciate. They have the same situation where they need a great deal of work behind their houses, and they have not been offered such a buyout, and would like to know how that can happen. So, you know, I think the problem that we have is we have many people flooding, and, you know, I believe a great deal of it was caused by the township, which is the only reason that I'm in favor of the buyouts. But, there are two issues here. One is that we treat everybody equally, and we have other people with exactly the same problem as this homeowner had, and they should be equally treated. And the second thing is that, in one particular case, there is a channel, and as I said, the township's role is that we had a channel between two houses, literally. We saw it in the pictures last time. Those lots shouldn't have been built on. It was clear that, you know, that stream, if it got larger, was going to compromise those houses. And in another situation, one house was bought out. That buyout actually made the other house problematic, because people see that that stream has been a problem, the township has bought it out, and then they're afraid to buy the other house. So, it compromises the values of the other house next to it. So, my question tonight is whether you would consider treating everyone equally. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Jones, did you care to comment on that?
I would indeed.
Thank you.
To be factual, there are not houses that are similarly situated, and that there are a couple of conditions that took place with that house. The first condition is that there have been resolutions sought for more than 10 years. The second condition is that this is most notably an issue that is occurring with the retaining walls, and retaining walls that have failed. Third, there is issues due to the size of the lot with actually being able to correct the problem that has been looked at by not only the township engineers, but by obtaining the difficulty in obtaining DEP permits. So, there are not similar situations. This is not an issue of flooding that occurs from the rear of the houses, because this resident has that also. This is a very different situation, one that has been worked on from at least two other commissioners, various township staff, and it's gone on for some time. So, I would not look at any of those issues as being similarly situated.
Thank you for the clarification. Commissioner Bowman?
And I know the, Mr. Powers isn't here, but I think this is the property where they wanted to put in their solution, right? They want to take the house to put the solution into that very location, right? So, that makes it unique.
Okay, and we were on PW7, okay?
I'm sorry, yes. Six was moved and successfully, right?
Correct. Okay. Motion has been seconded. Any other comments?
He's got to read PW7.
I'll read seven now. PW7, this is Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission. Transportation and Community Development Initiative Grant Program. This is a motion to enter into contract with Simone Collins Landscape Architecture in association with traffic planning and design, in an amount not to exceed $75,000, $60,000 to be reimbursed by the Transportation and Community Development Initiative Master Bicycle Plan Grant, and $15,000 from contingency fund, to develop and provide the Abington Township Master Bicycle Plan, to be funded from account number 06073015305, and I so move.
Motion has been seconded. Any comments from commissioners, staff? Any from residents? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Thank you. That's all we have tonight, Mr. President.
Thank you. Before I call on Commissioner Sanchez for the code enforcement land development, Commissioner Jones has an important announcement to make.
Yes. Yesterday, Mr. Lufyver, I believe, we received the letter from DEP related to the St. Michael's approval. I have asked that the code enforcement department send out notification, and they will be sending out, I believe tomorrow, notification to all residents on the distribution list, and they will send a copy of that letter to all residents as well. And for the record, this is something that was already approved by the township, is beyond the township. While there's not necessarily that need, it is the best thing to do for the residents, and I thank you. Thank you, Commissioner.
President.
Thank you, Commissioner Jones. Commissioner Sanchez?
Thank you, President Luker.
Mrs. Lehman, that was not an agenda item, so there's no comment.
Did he not just put it on the agenda?
No, he just made an announcement. It's not an agenda item. He just made an announcement. You can comment at the conclusion of the meeting.
Okay.
Thank you. Commissioner Sanchez.
Thank you, President Luker. Tonight, we have CE1 subdivision SD 1502 Frederick L. Conne, 2312 Jenkentown Road. This is a motion to approve the subdivision application of Frederick L. Conne, owner of the property located at 2312 Jenkentown Road. The owner seeks approval to subdivide the property into two lots. Lot number one will contain the existing single-family dwelling and consist of 14,264 square feet of lot area. Lot number two will have frontage on Weldon Avenue and consist of 7,646 square feet. No construction is proposed at this time. The properties are zoned in the R4 residential district in Ward number 13 of the Township of Abington, and the motion is subject to conditions and waivers as listed in the agenda, and I so move.
Second.
Motion has been seconded. Any comments from commissioners? Any from staff? Any from residents? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the motion passes.
That concludes our agenda for this evening, Mr. President.
Thank you, Commissioner Sanchez. Commissioner Schreiber, Director of Public Safety.
Thank you, President Luker. PS1 is ordinance number 2087 to amend Chapter 156 Vehicles and Traffic. This is a motion to adopt ordinance number 2087 amending Chapter 156 Vehicles and Traffic, Article 2 Traffic Regulations, and Section 14 Stop Intersections, and I so move.
Second.
Motion has been seconded. Any comments from commissioners or staff? Any from residents? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
PS2 is ordinance number 2088 to amend Chapter 156 Vehicles and Traffic, establishing Chapter 160 towing. This is a motion to advertise ordinance number 2088 amending Chapter 156 Vehicles and Traffic, establishing Chapter 160 towing, and I so move.
Second.
Motion has been seconded. Any comments from commissioners or staff? Any from residents? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
PS3 is resolution number 15008 Emergency Operations Plan Update. I'm going to call on Chief Kelly.
Madam Chairman, members of the committee, this is a process that has to be done every so often, where the, and the reason why we're emphasizing that here tonight is because it actually involves the board approving the emergency management plan that we operate under a direct responsibility of the board. And so, I can just give you just a couple moments of information, make sure everybody is up to speed and comfortable with that. As most of you know, I am the emergency management coordinator for the township. Deputy Chief John Livinggood is the deputy coordinator. Lieutenant Tom McNamara is the, is next, and then Fire Marshal Clark is next after that. As most of you know, with the exception of Fire Marshal Clark, whom we hope never retires, the three previous ones mentioned, we are in line to retire or in the drop program. And so, the person that also leaves as our emergency management coordinator is the person that is our emergency management administrator, Tom McInney, and he's going to give us just a very brief overview of the, what you're voting on tonight.
Thanks, Chief. Thank you, Mr. President, and ladies and gentlemen of the board. I promise I'm not going to rehash much of what we went over last week at public safety. Just as Chief said, these are, he's the coordinator, these are our deputy coordinators. The one thing I did want to hit on is, we try to use volunteers as much as possible to make sure that the return on investment in the emergency management program is maximized, and, you know, our main volunteer is Jim Lee. He donates approximately 500 hours of volunteer time throughout the year. He comes in three days a week. He's here during all of our emergency incidents. So, you know, I wanted to not only recognize him for that, but also to bring your attention that we try to utilize volunteers as much as possible. As you know, emergency management is not a traditional response agency. We don't pick up a hose, we don't track down the bad guys, and we don't plow the roads. What we do is, you know, we help to coordinate all of those missions and help bring the logistics and the resources to those agencies that need that, and kind of like the air traffic controller of an emergency incident. It's not just the people that sit in the EOC, or the crazy guy that sends out weather emails every two hours, it seems like anymore. But, you know, it's internal and external partners that we work with to move this mission forward. Tonight, we're here to ask that you vote on the updated emergency operations plan. And really quick, the three reasons that we have an emergency operations plan. First is basic preparedness. An emergency operations plan is the mechanism by which we're able to analyze our specific hazards for our township that were likely to occur, and analyze the assets, resources that we would need to respond to such things. And by updating it constantly, it provides that mechanism for us to anticipate future problems, new technology, new tactics. The second reason is legal compliance. State law requires that every municipality have an updated emergency operations plan, that we have a staffed and equipped EOC, and that we have a designated emergency management coordinator. And finally, financial reasons. Emergency operations are very costly, as everybody knows. In order to be eligible for disaster funds from PMA and FEMA for reimbursement for costs expended, we have to have an updated EOP. When dealing with FEMA during Sandy, Hurricane Sandy, they told us about communities that didn't have a plan, and they were excluded from receiving funds. Just to give an idea of the return on investment, obviously, it's not just emergency management that brings back these funds, it's the hard work of all the departments through their work throughout the incidents, as well as their meticulous record-keeping. But, just to give you an idea, over the last five years, we've been able to recover almost $800,000 in disaster funds, and the total township emergency management budget out of pocket is a little over $72,000. Now, Penn State also supplements that, because they pay half of the salary and benefits, but that's the amount out of the township pocket. Just really quick, some of the things that we've worked on. Over the last 24 months while I've been here, we've met with every K through 12 school, as well as both colleges and their administration, and been able to bring training presentations to, you know, a lot of our external partners, on 74 different occasions. We've participated in or moderated 21 different drills or exercises, ranging from 10-minute exercises for school employees to a full-scale exercise for delivering medications and things like that in a time of mass casualty. Weather events, we've monitored 17 serious weather events in the last 24 months, resulting in nine emergency declarations and two EOC activations, as well as the blizzard of 2015 about two weeks ago. Planned events, we provide emergency plans for planned events, such as July 4th parade and fireworks, and any large-scale event in the township, so that everybody's on the same page should something occur. Critical infrastructure planning, for our first responders, we've conducted 34 assessments and made that information available. And we've monitored, researched, and reported on three different infectious disease issues in the last year, West Nile virus, Ebola, and actually norovirus most recently. We've had two major incidents of significance, the ice storm of 2014, as well as the Penn State lockdown. of significance, the ice storm of 2014, as well as the Penn State lockdown. And then, you know, as I said, the EOC has been activated 35 times in the last almost 20 years. For every time that it's activated, we probably put it together and put it up two times and then take it down without activating it just to be, you know, when things are anticipated but don't necessarily occur, most recently the blizzard of 2015 that I just alluded to. And then, FieldCom, too. This is an example of the partnership that we have with Montgomery County. It's a, they own the vehicle, we maintain and staff it, and it's been to all of our major incidents, including the septic rail crash, the pavilion carbon monoxide mass casualty event, and as well as community events. Fourth of July parade is the one where it's most visible, and it goes out to other events and incidents throughout the local community and other townships. In addition to that, that partnership, we're able to bring in by borrowing equipment from the county, you know, sign board, electronic sign boards, emergency lighting, things like that, that, you know, when we have something that's beyond what we have locally, we're able to go out and reach out to our partners at the county to bring those resources in. That's pretty much the conclusion. I just, I always like to put this slide in here. If anybody needs information about any of our emergency programs or notifications, these are the best ways to get it, whether it's through the website, the social media, or mass notification, so.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Commissioner Schreiber, thank you, Tom. Anyone have any questions? Mr. McInnany?
The motion's not on the floor yet.
No, it's not on the floor. Go ahead.
So, going back to the motion, motion to adopt resolution number 15008 Executing the Current Abington Township Emergency Operations Plan, and I so move.
Second.
Motion has been seconded. Any comments from commissioners, staff, resident, oh, Commissioner Schreiber?
I was just going to say, it was a good presentation, and it's wonderful to get emails from you, but can we get them a little bit less than we've been getting them recently?
Well, pitchers and catchers report in three days, so the end is in sight.
Thank you, thank you.
I like your emails.
Comments from residents?
Laura Lehman Bryant Lane. So, after our exchange at the last meeting, I looked up my notes from my October 2nd meeting, or phone call with Mr. McInnany, where I was asking him about the colonade. And my reason for asking was because in reviewing the documents, we had found residents that were hearing impaired, residents in wheelchairs, senior citizens that were disabled. They were on high floors in a building with no elevators, as you've heard, 251 fire calls, et cetera, et cetera. And I just want to tell you that, here's what I wrote. I asked if they could mail out the notice of the sign-up for this list, so that people are aware of it, in a leaf flyer or something. He answered, "I don't know, and I don't want to debate that with you." And I responded to him that I didn't really want someone running my emergency management that answered that question, which was a sincere question about a sincere safety issue, with a response that I don't want to debate it with you. I'd like to have somebody who says, "Thank you, that's an interesting idea. I'll get back to you." He did tell me at the end of the conversation that he'd get back to me. He never did. Instead, you can see, if you ask Mr. Lefebvre for it, or if you want me to send it to you, I will, an email from him where he suggested that I was playing stump the chump, and that he didn't release any information that would be damaging.
Okay, Mrs. Lehman, this was an update?
I want to tell you that the way residents are treated in that fashion is inexcusable. So, Mr. McInnany looks like a very nice man.
Address the board, please. Address the chair of the board, not individual.
I wasn't, can Mr. Klein control himself? I don't think he even knows who I was addressing.
What is your point concerning the operation plan update?
Yeah. So, what I'm saying is, the person who is operating the operating plan is, if he is to be someone that we put in charge of, and you can see this is a pretty impressive undertaking, okay? He's done a nice job with the presentation, but how it is meted out in this township, and how residents are treated, and how the results are, because the results affect the hearing impaired person on the eighth floor or 12th floor of that building, okay, depends on whether this gentleman is going to get some sort of discipline for that kind of interaction with the residents, and whether the residents are going to get respect, okay? That's what I'm asking for, and that's why I am here at this podium, because so far, there has been little change, and that is easy to do. If Mr. McInnany is a nice man, then discipline him, and let's get him turned around the right way.
Okay, thank you very much. That's the end of the conversation. Thank you. Any more comments from residents? Hearing none? Commissioner Klein.
I would just like to make a comment first. I mean, I've had numerous interactions with Mr. McInnany, because my ward has been hit. Not that anybody else's ward hasn't been hit during these storms, but my ward gets hit pretty hard because of all the trees and things. And you've done an exceptional job, the way the EOC is set up. I would also say that I think it's important that all communication from residents, it's preferred that the communication go through the manager's office and/or their commissioner, and not directly to individual staff members. That's the way that the township can control information, that's, or control the method of which information is passed through, and get the correct information. Some residents choose not to follow those protocols, even after being told time and time again that they should go through the manager's office. Thank you.
That would be beneficial if that was followed. Any other comments?
I'm sorry, Mr. President, I promise I'll keep this brief, but during the ice storm last year, when I had the pleasure of actually spending the night in this building, working, I got to observe Mr. McInnany also spending the night in this building, and I saw the way he works, saw the way he interacts with staff, seen the way he interacts with residents. And while I would certainly like to commend him for what I think is the fantastic job he does, I want to just put on the record, I think it is unconscionable for him to be attacked in that way. He is a consummate professional. He keeps his head pointed forward and is working constantly, and he doesn't make a peep except to make these presentations. And I think for his character to be benign that way is absolutely unconscionable.
You're here.
And thank you, Mr. McInnany. Our apologies for that. You have a comment you wanted to make?
No, sir. Thank you for your time.
Okay, very good. Motion has been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Thank you, sir.
PS4 is bids for police uniform equipment. This is a motion to award the contract for furnishing police uniform equipment to American Uniform Sales, Inc., and I so move.
Second.
Motion has been seconded. Any comments from commissioners? Staff, residents, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
PS5 is bids for police uniforms, shirts, coats. This is a motion to award the contract for furnishing police uniforms, shirts, coats to Red the Uniform Taylor, Inc., and I so move.
Second.
Motion has been seconded. Any comments from commissioners or staff? Any from residents? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
PS6 is Buckle Up PA Seafell Enforcement and Education Project. This is a motion to authorize township officials to accept a grant from the North Central Highway Safety Network in the amount of $10,000. The Department of Transportation previously funded this program through Buckle Up Pennsylvania, and is now funding this program through the North Central Highway Safety Network, and I so move.
Second.
Motion has been seconded. Any comments from commissioners or staff? Any from residents? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
PS7 Aggressive Driving Grant. This is a motion to authorize township officials to accept a grant from the North Central Highway Safety Network, Inc., in the amount of $13,000. With the township's matching portion of $1,000, the township's match will cover the social security costs of the officers working the grant, as this expense is not covered by the grant. At the conclusion of the grant, the social security expense will be transferred to 01040445110, and I so move.
Second.
Motion has been seconded. Comments from commissioners or staff? Any from residents? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
And PS8 is ordinance number 2090 to amend Chapter 156 Vehicles and Traffic, Article 2 Traffic Regulations, Section 7 Speed Limits Established. This is a motion to advertise ordinance number 2090, amending Chapter 156 Vehicles and Traffic, Article 2 Traffic Regulations, Section 7 Speed Limits Established, for adoption at the regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Commissioners on March 12, 2015. And I so move.
Second. Motion has been seconded. Any comments from commissioners or staff? Any from residents?
Mr. President, Commissioner Heckler has.
Thank you. This is just a brief reminder. We covered this at the committee meeting
last week. This is part of the comprehensive effort to address traffic and pedestrian safety concerns on Rockwell Road, and I want to again express my appreciation to Chief Kelly and the members of the Police Department and the township staff in working with us to find a way forward to help address this portion of the residents' concern, and I look forward to continuing our work on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from commissioners?
Just want to echo exactly what Commissioner Heckler said.
Right, good. Any comments from residents? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
That concludes our agenda this evening.
Thank you, Commissioner Schreiber. Commissioner Spiegelman, Director of Public Affairs.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Tonight, we have three items for public affairs. The first is PA1 Resolution Number 15-007 for Pico Green Region Grant for Jackson Park. This is a motion to approve Resolution Number 15-007, which authorizes the Bureau of Parks and Recreation to make application to the National Natural Lands Trust for the 2015 Pico Green Region Grant in the amount of $10,000. The funding will be used for the removal of invasive vines and the establishment of a meadow in Jackson Park, and I so move.
Second.
Motion has been seconded. Any comments from commissioners? Commissioner Klein.
Thank you. I missed the public affairs meeting last week, and I just wanted to thank Doug for putting this together, and let me know if there's anything I can do to help try to get this grant.
Thank you, Vice President Klein. Any other comments from commissioners? Any from, oh, Commissioner Bowman, I'm sorry.
Where is Jackson Park?
It's just south, I'm sorry, just east of Meadow Brook Road.
Oh, yeah, okay. Thank you.
Can you follow me and approach our country?
Thank you.
Come over, Commissioner Bowman. We can take a walk through the.
Written by, now he says that.
Any other comments from commissioners? Any from staff? Any from residents? Name and address.
Laura Lehman Bryant Lane. I won't be remiss in mentioning that with Jackson Park, we have asked endlessly for an entrance or at least a sign on Meadow Brook Road, which is its main access, to show where the park entrance is. It's not there. It's not easy to find the park entrance, and so the park has become a personal park for a very small group of neighbors, a large enough group of neighbors, but a small group of neighbors. And vast resources are being put there while we have an entire forest dying, that's been dying for years, just around the corner. So, I would like to see some response to having access to that park from the front on Meadow Brook Lane, which is where everybody passes. Very few people go to Amity Road if they don't live there. They have no need to, and it's not easy to find. So, please, this is a public park with public funds. Don't make it publicly funded and privately enjoyed.
Thank you. Commissioner, Vice President.
Yeah, I mean, there are, I'll wait till.
You can have a seat, Mrs. Lehman.
Well, I still have a second left. I didn't use my whole three minutes on that, so perhaps if.
I don't think he's responding to your comment.
Something to say, I might like to share that last minute.
I'll wait, you can finish then.
Are you going to speak on the issue again?
I think you were finished, correct? This is not a debate between you and Commissioner Klein. I think you were finished, correct? Would you have a seat, please?
I'll be finished now, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Klein.
Yeah, I just, there are at least two signs, one on Meadow Brook Road. There is one on Amity. I think there's a couple other smaller signs that denote where the entrances are, especially the entrance on Meadow Brook Road, which is right across from Paper Mill. You know, this is a used park by definitely the neighbors. The master plan that was developed for Jackson Park has a parking lot to be constructed at some point when funds become available, but right now, the invasives are a primary, or a primary need other than the parking, because there is some street parking, people use Paper Mill Road. It is duly marked, like every other one of our township parks, it has the same type of signage, two posts, and arched. If you miss it, if you can't see the sign, then you must not be looking. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion has been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Item PA2 is Resolution Number 15-010, the Pool Feasibility Study Grant. This is a motion to approve Resolution Number 15-010, which states that the Township of Abington desires to receive a grant from the Pennsylvania Department of Conservation and Natural Resources to undertake a pool feasibility study for Penbren and Crestmont Pools, and I so move.
Second.
Motion has been seconded. Any comments from commissioners, staff? Any from residents? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Our final item is PA3 Economic Development Business District Landscape Maintenance Bid. This is a motion authorizing the proper township officials to contract with Louis F. Biasey, landscape contractor, for the 2015 service year in an amount not to exceed $75,000 for the business district landscape maintenance contract. Funds will be drawn from economic development capital accounts reserved for this purpose, and I so move.
Second.
The motion has been seconded. Any comments from commissioners or staff? Any from residents?
Again, publicly funded, privately enjoyed on our properties. We don't have somebody taking care of the landscaping, and even commercial properties have a responsibility to take care of their own landscaping. And when we have a business district, those businesses benefit and profit from that. It should not be publicly funded. The zoning rewrites recently, we were told that if we have a tree, the township will come, and if it's in disrepair, the township will come and take it down, and our property will be leaned. So, we should have an ordinance of how the business district should look, what the regulations are for that business district. And if they do not adhere to that, then we should use our services to do it and lean their property for it. It is not our job to take care of, and I've seen in prior contracts, the hardscaping, we're planting trees for them. These are their private properties that are benefiting from the public funds, and the same amount is not going back. We just had a grant for counting trees, and I wondered how that forest that's dying in the nature preserve got missed in the counting of trees. And I understood the answer from Rita Stevens to be that the tree grant, the tree counting grant, was only for the economic development areas. So, again, our grant money going for the business district, okay, which profits handsomely from the, we have no way really to profit on our properties. They do. And the amount of money that's going publicly to private properties needs to, that is how the way, by the way, that the wealth is being traded. If you cannot see that, okay, the inequity in wealth in this country comes from businesses learning how to profit from public money.
Thank you.
Can I make a comment?
Commissioner, Vice President Klein.
Thank you. I mean, there are so many incoherent and unconnected aspects to that comment, but let me be clear about something. We're talking about $75,000 for the business district. The funds that are used for this, if I remember correctly, come from LOU funding that we get from our nonprofits, correct?
I'm sorry, yes, that is correct.
And we should also remember that I think it's close to $13, $14 million of the revenue in the township budget is generated from business taxes. That's just business taxes. When I talk about business taxes, business privilege taxes, employee, employee, lower?
Oh, you're including earned income tax?
Yeah, earned income tax.
That's not business tax, though.
Well, yeah, business-generated taxes. Business privilege tax, employment income tax, and LST tax. Those are taxes above and beyond what the property taxes that are paid by the business districts. So, it is incumbent upon the township to make sure we take care of these areas within our right-of-way, within the township's owned property, to make sure that our business districts stay vital and viable and produce, and continue to bring in tax dollars, because it is indeed the fact that we keep taxes low and we control our finances that makes property values go up. That's how, that's how the property owners in the township benefit from this aspect. Thank you.
Thank you. The motion has been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Mr. President, that concludes public affairs business for this month. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Vice President Stephen Klein, Director of Finance Committee.
Thank you. And speaking of taxes, I'll call on Treasurer Jay Blumenthal for the treasurer's report tonight.
Thank you, Commissioner Klein. I just have one report, and that's on the amounts deposited by the Tax Office directly into the. into the accounts of Republic Bank for all departments. In the total for this month, and of course, year-to-date, because it's only for the month of January, was $731,639, an increase of 43,841 over the prior year. There is no report tonight on real estate taxes collected, because there were none collected in January. The bills were mailed out last week. All property owners here should have received an envelope from me with a nice blue bill inside. You're welcome, Mr. Mark -- excuse me, Commissioner Markman. I got one myself, of course. So they were mailed out, and the revenues are already starting to come in. We have people lining up right when we get in the day after they get their tax bills. So everybody wants to be first.
Not me.
That's my report. Thank you.
Not me. Not me either.
Yes, Commissioner Gillespie.
Thank you. I just wanted to note, in the letter, which was great, and thank you for the bill. I couldn't wait to get it. It said about the trash container, $23. I just wanted to make sure that everybody realizes that is just that one trash can. Somebody did say to me, "Three times $23." And I said, "No, we have one trash receptacle. The others are recyclable." Okay? Just so everybody that might be listening knows that.
Just the green can.
Thank you, Commissioner Gillespie. Good point. Thank you. Commissioner Klein.
FC 1, motion to A, approve the December expenditures as previously circulated to the Board in the amount of $2,791,626.9 and souring wages in the amount of $1,733,413.85. And B, authorize the proper officials to sign vouchers in payment of bills and contracts as they mature through the month of March 2015, and I so move.
Second. Motion has been seconded. Roll call, please.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Spiegelman?
Yes.
Sanchez?
Yes.
Markman?
Yes.
Kowalski?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
DePulcito?
Yes.
Farron?
Yes.
Gillespie?
Yes.
Hecker?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Looker?
Yes.
F.C. 2, motion to approve the advance in travel expense activity for December 2014 as previously circulated to the Board. Advance and travel expense report were $0.00 and $114.33 respectively. The 12-month expense total was $39,006.38, and I so move.
Second.
Motion has been seconded. Any comments from commissioners or staff? Any from residents? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
F.C. 3, motion to approve the clearing fund, the deferred revenue expense activity and petty cash balances for the month of December as previously circulated to the Board. December petty cash balance balances previously circulated to the Board. Clearing fund receipts and dispersments for the month of December 2014 were $792.31 and $0.00 respectively. Deferred revenue expense receipts and dispersments for the month of December 2014 were $13,084.57 and $42.21 respectively, and I so move.
Second.
Motion has been seconded. Any comments from commissioners or staff? And any from residents? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
F.C. 4, motion to adopt ordinance number 2089, regulating the penalty, interest, and fee schedule for the collection of delinquent real estate taxes, and to authorize township staff to notify Montgomery County Tax Claim Bureau that the township will utilize northeast tax revenue for the collection of 2014 delinquent real estate taxes, and I so move.
Second.
Motion has been seconded. Any comments from commissioners or staff? Any from residents? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
That concludes our agenda for tonight.
Thank you, Vice President Klein. That concludes our formal agenda. Are there any comments from residents?
So where to start? Commissioner Klein, it's constantly saying that I'm not giving--
Mrs. Lehman?
Laura Lehman.
To the point, please.
Bryant Lane.
Thank you.
Commissioner Klein is regularly saying that I'm giving false--
Mrs. Lehman?
Yes.
You're wasting time.
Okay, so--
Point one.
Commissioner Klein just gave some incorrect information that I'd like to correct. Okay? That is, he just said that the business district brings in EIT and LST taxes and not just real estate taxes. Neither do the residents. My family has real estate taxes. We also pay EIT taxes, as does virtually every resident in this--
Mrs. Lehman, watch what you're pressing your button. You're pressing buttons all over the place here.
Yes, I see that. Well, I had it. Yeah, I had it on the thing. I think it's okay to--
Close the lid. Or hands.
Okay, thanks. Okay, so residents pay EIT taxes. Thousands of residents pay business taxes in this township and need to be treated equally. And thousands of businesses are not in, perhaps hundreds, I don't know the number, are not in the business districts that are getting these benefits. They are in districts where they have to pay for all of their own improvements. And that's my point. And the false information is not helpful from that side of the podium.
Next point. Thank you. Next point.
And then Mr. Clark said that having appraisals, and I suggested that having the appraisals, or I'm sorry, not the appraisals, but the specs that he said made his better, I said should have been in the bid specs, and of course, in an RFP, perhaps you don't have bid specs, but nobody gives you an RFP without knowing something about what it is you're asking. And it would be our solicitor to determine what it is we're asking. So that conflict of interest, whether it's RFP or--
Depends on what you're gonna bet on.
Is this my time or your time?
But if you're going to lie, I have to correct.
I'm not lying. I'm suggesting that if there is, if the solicitor is looking at it and determines that when we put out an RFP, we need to tell people, you obviously have to tell them what it is you want.
I didn't look at it. Pennzoil and Pononi did.
Mrs. Lehman, I think you've gotten all your comments--
But it's your job to oversee it.
Regarding that project--
All right.
For three days now. I think this is a dead issue. Go ahead.
Commissioner Sanchez, it would be up to our solicitor to determine if the right things were in there and to tell these people that's what we wanted in there.
Next point.
But if they want it for themselves, they wouldn't do that. That's a conflict.
Next point.
Commissioner Sanchez, I just wanted to correct that you knew both of the parties, and that is enough to disqualify you from voting. It's not--
No, it's not. I know them in a professional capacity. What's the difference? I know you. Does that disqualify you from speaking at the podium on the issue? I mean, this is--
Okay. So yes, you should disqualify when you know the parties intimately, okay?
I don't know the parties intimately. That's again a misstatement. I know the parties professionally.
One of them is your parents, right? One of the parties--
Mrs. Lehman?
I'm not talking about the contractor.
You're mixing apples and oranges. Mrs. Lehman? Next point.
I'm not talking about the contractor. I was talking about the two parties, the neighbor and the--
Okay, next point.
That was the Conti subdivision, and--
Okay.
Mrs. Sanchez, hold on, please.
Thank you. Okay.
Finish, wrap it up, Mrs. Lehman. Your time is just about up.
Yes, well, okay. My time or your time? Commissioner Jones, we ask that the Code Enforcement Department had already, the manager, rather, had already received this February 6th. And we do not have an answer. I think you've probably seen the emails. St. Michael's does not have an answer as to when their appeal date is. That's stuff that you can be helpful with, and these residents need your help. So I'm asking you, I'm appealing to you, that they shouldn't have gotten it from me first. They should have gotten it from you with help directing them where to go, to find out their appeal dates and the forms and so on. Okay? Commissioner Klein suggested that--
Mrs. Lehman, your three minutes are up.
Well, not my three minutes. Somebody else's three minutes, okay? Commissioner Klein said that the protocol is to go through the management--
Mrs. Lehman, your time is up. You've had more than ample time all evening to get all your comments voiced, so I think we'll move on. Any other comments from the public? Thank you, ma'am.
It comes another three minutes. I don't know if he's leaving. That doesn't work that way.
Name and address, please.
Walt Draving, 1431 Bryant Lane.
Yes, sir.
It, you know, in this country, we all have the right to dissent, and we all have the right to raise issues that are, you know, that we feel are contrary to either our own interest or the interests of the people that we know. And it seems to me that when, whether one person does it for a lot of people or a lot of people do it for themselves, that the commissioner should be more interested in the truth and what is going on, as opposed to trying to figure out what kind of, you know, retorts they can come up with that somehow make that individual look less than they actually are. And I feel like it's the job of you, President Luker, to rein in some of the people, like the person on my far right who thinks of themselves as some bombastic individual that can just raise--
Sir.
You know, criticisms whenever they feel like it. So I think that it's your responsibility, and in my mind, as a taxpayer, to rein some of these people in and to look for, you know--
Sir, I don't want personally--
Michael LaFever tonight said that he appreciated the information, the unsolicited information he got from his budget person. Seems like the unsolicited information that you're getting should be appreciated and not tossed back at the person.
All right, thank you. Any other comments from residents? Name and address, sir.
Yes, my name is Greg Urban. As some of you know me, I work here at the Police Department. And as I did last year, and I like to do this year, I am here to ask your help, commissioners, in doing a little positive work in the township and helping me with the Abington PAL show that we put on at the Keswick Theater. It's an important fundraiser for the PAL program. It's one of the major fundraisers that we have that keeps it going. And I sent out some emails to you. I hope you all received them. It was my little beg-a-thon that I did. If you guys could pass that on to your constituents and put them in your newsletters, I would greatly appreciate it. This show is headlines, Mike Marino. He's a high-talented comedian that's coming out from Los Angeles and doing our show and then flying down to Florida to do a show on some cruises. So this is a very talented man. He's come out here. He's glad to work with us. He's done nothing but call me and say how much he's going to look forward to helping the PAL program. We also have Sudsy coming from next, from last year. Those who were there, he was really good. It was a great show. So as I'm asking the commissioners and whoever will see this and the people in the audience, please support this wonderful program. Last year, we had about 1,000 people. Our goal is to sell the Keswick out, which is 1,300, so we're not far away. And I think we're going to have a great, great time that night, a lot of great reviews from last year. Also, just so you know, that the Keswick Theater, one of our great businesses in this township, also helps us out with this. So there's a lot of people that put this together. There's a lot of volunteers in the PAL program that do it. And we would just like everybody to come and help support us. It's actually a great cause, and I hope to see you all there. Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments from residents? Hearing none? We'll get comments from commissioners. We'll start with commissioners of home.
All right. Thank you. As a reminder to my residents, the second, I'm sorry, the Second Annual Ardsley Family Day, Oldies Night, will take place Friday, the 27th of February, from 7:00 to 11:00 at the North Penn VFW. So I welcome everyone to come out and participate and enjoy the fun, food, dance, and your neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Spiegelman.
Thank you, Mr. President. Two great and important events coming up. On Saturday, the 21st, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., right here in Ward 11, at the Public Works Township Yards on Flori Lane, we have the next Anything With a Plug Recycling. Got to love that. Very popular. And thanks, of course, to our friends at Public Works for helping to coordinate all that. And then the next day, the 22nd, Sunday, Sunday, the 22nd, from noon to 4:00 p.m., very honored to be involved in a charitable collection, the Abington Warmth and Comfort Drive, working with Commissioner Hecker and First Lady Hecker. We are collecting three categories of donations at the, she's the first lady. First lady wore 10. Three categories of donations at the Brownstone, the Brownstone at Sunrise near, across from the Y. We are collecting, I'm glad that was very entertaining. We are collecting new and gently-used winter coats and hats and scarves and other winter attire. We're collecting new or extremely gently-used bedding, comforters, blankets, sheets, and towels. And we're collecting, of course, for the Interfaith Food Cupboard of Abington, non-perishable goods and personal care items, so toothbrush, toothpaste, et cetera. And so again, that's the Sunday, the 22nd of February, from noon to 4:00 p.m. Hope to see everybody there. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Sanchez.
Thank you, President Luker. I'm reluctant to indulge the nonsense of one of the speakers yet again this evening, but just because my parents were invoked in the statement she made, my parents have no relationship with anybody on any project that was mentioned here tonight. They are the next-door neighbors of the Conti subdivision, which was the code enforcement item. I disclosed that in the committee meeting, just for full transparency, but they have no position on the project whatsoever, nor do I have any pecuniary relationship in that application. So I just wanted to clarify that, because things may have been mixed up and misinterpreted. So thank you. That's all. No other comment this evening.
Thank you, sir. Good stuff. Commissioner Myers, thank you.
Thank you. There will be a second Coffee with a Cup. I understand the first one went very well. On Saturday, February 28th, at 9:00 o'clock in the morning, this will be held at the Willigrove Mall, inside of the mall, but it'll be the back of the Bravo Restaurant. a Cup, and residents are welcome to come and talk to different police officers, ask any questions, maybe explain some situations they may be having. And it's all a not, no pressure, just a casual conversation, and certainly we hope that people will come out and join us. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Myers. Commissioner Markman.
No comment.
Thank you. Commissioner Kalanowski.
No comment.
Thank you. Commissioner Schreiber.
Yeah, two things this evening. First of all, everybody's aware that we have freezing temperatures coming up, probably the coldest of the year. And so, I just want to remind everybody, not just that we're, I'm not sure when we're calling a Code Blue, but I'm assuming the county's going to do that, but also in Abington, we have a tethering, an anti-tethering ordinance that addresses bringing pets inside in extreme weather conditions. So, I want to remind everybody of that, to bring your pets inside. The second thing, on a lighter note, is that I want to remind everybody that we are approaching our deadline to submit films for the Roslyn Film Festival, the end of this month, by March 1st, we need any films that people might want to submit. So, if you know any budding filmmakers, again, please spread the word. They have to, the films must be under 30 minutes, they're short films. If you've never been to the event, it is in March, it benefits the fire company in Roslyn, and it's a really fun event. The audience becomes film critics for the night and votes on the films, and we have a really great time. So, contact me if you need more information, or go to the Roslyn Film Festival website, or the, there's also a Facebook page. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Bowman.
Just to voice my appreciation to Commissioner Klein, I've been watching the somewhat dry presentations about the county. But I do appreciate your work, the other members of that team or government employees, I think, who probably get flex or benefit time to make up for the time they spend on that. And you don't. So, your, your work is extensive there, and although it is sometimes joked about, it's important because zoning is outdated, and now we kind of understand that there's a better way to have zoning, to mix uses, to mix living and stores that you need, and pizza shops and a bar, or whatever it might be. And you're updating things, and that's good for America and for our town. So, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner DePulcito.
Thank you, Mr. President. I concur also with Commissioner Bowman. I also have a question for our township staff. Ed, what are you doing here? Commissioner Farron just said you should be at home in bed with a gallon of ice cream right now. Welcome back. All right. Quick note, a couple weeks ago, on the 27th of January, forecasters predicted snowmageddon, and we got a hole two inches. Now, this is a shameless plug for my gig, but many of you know that I am a vampire during my daytime job. I work for the American Red Cross Blood Services Region. And because of that call for a snowmageddon, the Red Cross had to cancel 20 out of 22 blood drives in our local, in our tri-state area. Every day, we need to collect approximately 800 units of blood to meet our patients and our customers, our local hospitals' needs. On this particular day, we had two drives left that were going to open up late, and one of them happened to be in Abington Township at the VFW, North Penn VFW. I contacted Commissioner Kalanowski early in the morning, and I asked him if the doors would be open, and he assured me that they'd be ready, the lot would be plowed, and we could get right in there. I also then contacted my fellow commissioners to assist in getting the word out via Facebook, Twitter, email blasts, and it was extremely effective to that. A donor came in and said, "My commissioner just sent me an email, so therefore, that's why I'm coming by to donate today." So, thank you for that. And as well as our township manager, Michael LaFever, he also put something up for me as well and got the word out. And thanks. Several pitched in, the word was out, and as a region, we collected a little over 100 units of blood for the tri-state area. But Abington brought in almost 50 of those units. So, half the blood we collected on that day came from this township. So, on behalf of all of the patients and all the local hospitals and all the lives that we saved on that day, thank you, Commissioner Kalanowski. Thank you, Commissioner Spiegelman. Thank you, Commissioner Sanchez. Who else? Thank you, Commissioner Klein. Thank you, Commissioner Hecker. And thank you, Commissioner Farron. And thank you, Commissioner Gillespie, for getting that word out, because it worked. All right.
I think that deserves a round of applause. I don't mean to cut you off, sir, but--
All right, well, good. Then while I'm at it, there's a blood drive at McKinley Elementary next week on the 19th. But I also have something for Commissioner Kalanowski. Come down.
That is a very important hint. Only the movie stars and celebrities have that.
Thank you. That's awesome.
And if you're driving to that blood drive, as always, drive like your kids live here. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Farron.
Thank you, Commissioner Luker. I just want to say, welcome back, Ed. You should go home and have a pint of ice cream. Thank you.
Commissioner Gillespie.
Thank you. I wanted to congratulate Sumatiza. We will miss her. She's just excellent at what she did, and we all loved her. And I had you on my list, too. I'm sitting there looking at you, and I'm so glad to see you sitting there. I don't care what they say, I'm glad you're sitting there. And I just want everybody to mark their calendars for April 11th. It will be the Family Fun Walk Run. I'm going to say that because a lot of people walk, but we do have a lot of runners, and that's to benefit the Greater Glensite Patriotic Association, 4th of July parade, and it's in memory of Mike Gillespie. So, just mark your calendars now and start getting ready. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Hecker.
Thank you, Commissioner Luker. I'll refer everyone to Commissioner Spiegelman's earlier public service announcements about what's happening, the weekend of February 21 and 22. I also wanted to echo my sentiment. Ed, it's great to see you here. You know, there was a lot of concern, and what was interesting and heartening for me as a relatively new commissioner was just to see, just the high regard that you are held in throughout this community. I think it's well-deserved based on your service. We're really glad that everything is okay, and I look forward to hanging with you on the 21st at the recycling event. One other comment. I'm going to make one comment about the tenor and tone of the meeting tonight. I said this once before last year, and it bears repeating. The level of incivility with which many of these conversations started tonight is unacceptable. And when you start a conversation at that level, it will never raise to the level of substance. It just won't happen. It starts in a defensive posture, but I suspect that was already known. And I think if we're going to have true dialogue, there needs to be a different way forward. There are issues to be addressed in this township. This board is committed to working together to address those issues. No one should have any doubt about that. The staff is first-rate. It doesn't mean we're perfect. Well, we understand that, and I would say that you need to get your--
Show me that you--
You, I'm not going to go any further other than to say, you need to understand the facts before you put forward accusations like you did tonight. It is unacceptable, and I want everyone to know that.
Hear, hear, Commissioner Hecker.
Read Mr. McInney's own words. Those were facts.
Mrs. Layman, please sit down. Thank you. Mr. Hecker, you have the floor, sir.
I'm finished. Thank you very much, President Luker.
Commissioner Jones.
Thank you, President Luker. Quick question. Commissioner Bowman, when you were saying combining things, did you mean to have a storage facility, a pizza, and a bar all in one? I was confused. That'd be a nice business, though. I want to start off by thanking Chief Kelly and Police Department with their continued assistance in working with the safety zone. I heard some unfortunate news from close by my old alma mater way down in Georgia, and it was, something like this could have avoided some very bad things. So, kudos to you. I'd also like to thank Ron Griffith for some, he's always responsive for neighbors and things with animal control. And to kind of follow up on what Commissioner Hecker said, I want to give a special shout out to all of the civic associations, but specifically McKinley Civic Association. As a young man growing up in this township, I was raised within that civic association with people like John Hill, Ethel Jordan, Waverly Woodley, Loya Vance. They were community advocates. Whenever there was an issue, they would advocate for the community, they would be there to support them. They were community activists, that any time there was a problem, they were drawn to action. They were not community agitators because they understood, and they understood and showed with dignity and grace, that a community agitator does nothing but bring about divisiveness and does not bring solutions but causes further conflict. I think we should be able to work together and should raise things to a higher level of intellectual debate, but when we attack one another and when attacks are thrown, it causes a chilling effect that leads to nothing getting done. So, I thank my commissioners, the community, and I thank those advocates and activists that came before us. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Jones. Vice President Klein.
Unfortunately for the Board of Commissioners, I'll be, I'll be bringing my dry act of zoning to you shortly.
We can't wait.
With that, with that being said, I did want to announce that we completed the review or the presentation of the draft zoning ordinance in front of the Planning Commission after four meetings. I think it was close to 10 and a half hours of conversation with the Planning Commission. I can't talk enough about how, how well the Planning Commission dealt with this, dealt with the presentations and was interactive and constructive. They have brought up great ideas, they brought up great comments, things that need to be discussed. You'll be receiving at some point in the near future their written recommendation of changes and things that should be looked at. But I also wanted to mention that this, none of this work would have been done without staff, former Assistant Township Manager, Matt Lahaza, put a lot of time in, Larry Mark, our planner from MCPC, and without a doubt, not to mention any of, or to mention all of the volunteers from the Planning Commission, Ashley Spearman, I mean, I can go on and on. Ed Mebus was a huge help. I think I learned a lot, we learned a lot from him. The zoning ordinance committee learned a lot from him about the issues that they have faced in the existing ordinance. A tremendous amount of work. Unfortunately for the board, that presentation is coming to you, hopefully not 10 and a half hours. We'll have to have discussions about dates, but I will try to make it a little bit more lively. No, I'm not kidding.
Compliments tried, not your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Vice President Klein, a couple things briefly. Last Sunday, VFW Post 3398 and Chris Mott hosted a Jazz Breakfast event at my neighboring VFW, the North Penn Post, number 676, and it was very successful, and I thank Commissioner Kalanowski and his staff for the hospitality as the community attempts to bring the VFW Post 3398 back into operation. Secondly, Ed, during your absence, again, I echo the sentiments. Why are you here? Your staff, Angelo, and all your staff and all your people did a yeoman's job in your absence, filling in for you so you wouldn't have to be here. So, I think you want to say something, because you pulled the microphone to you.
No, I'm just telling you, I agree.
Oh, okay. But, but my point is, Ed, when you get a chance to shut it down, you should shut it down. You've got a good staff, you, you, you have it so that they-- So, anyway, I'm not going to let you say anything. Your time's up. Okay, and lastly, comments by Commissioner Hecker and Jones. This job, sitting here, is hard enough trying to figure out what the seven on this side are doing and the seven on this side are doing, especially, but I'm getting to the point where I feel like I'm going to have to wear referee's uniform here, because the intent is to discuss township business, not to have personal attacks. And I apologize to any staff members, Mr. McInney in particular, to allow any personal attacks. Sometimes I'm geared to what's going on on both sides, and I, and I miss an opportunity to shut down someone when they do that. And so, Mrs. Layman, please sit down. I'm just echoing the sentiments that--
How about the personal attacks to me? Did you count them? Did you count them?